All right, it's now 5:00 p.m. and I call this administrative meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. Please silence your cell phones and make sure you're still in and it's all back. Our virtual root business this evening is a donation to the City of Ozark, one of the seniors. They're not here, they didn't come. You have to pick someone from the audience that's there. Well, if they got it, they are.
I'm Michelle, yeah, from the season.
Oh, yeah. So that means Ms. Michelle just gets to go around and say, okay. Yeah, so they get here before the end of this one. So at this time, we're going to review the agenda for the 5:30 p.m. meeting. So after our call to order in the prayer and pledge of allegiance, we will review minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on September 17th, 2024. Council members, do you have any questions or comments about those minutes? So then, item number five is the Ozark Historic Preservation Commission Board of Maintenance. So Mayor, I do believe we have.
Yes, this board has submitted, Ms. Susan Juden, I think you have a copy of that.
So council members, do we have any comments or questions about the, I guess, proposed campaign, or if there are any additional considerations? Item number six is to approve the updated policy and procedures handbook. So I'm going to actually call Heather up here for that one. She said, who, who's me? So people can explain that one for us.
We're done with the updated handbook. It's been a long time. It's been a very long time. So we just had some worrying purchasing policy. I think we said that, that everyone is always satisfied that everything we have in the handbook matches what the practice. I think everybody got coffee.
We did. We did. Do we have any additional questions for Heather on updating the policy and procedure basis for the purchasing policy change?
It wasn't no, no really reason pertaining to anyone, why we take updated.
I'm sorry.
There was nothing pertaining to any of the employees that's why we needed to update.
It was more than the purchasing policies now. I mean, it's throughout the whole handbook. So it just reflected any change of scheduling. We had to add the Juneteenth holiday. That was not in the list that we hand out.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yes, yes, yes.
Pertinent to anything.
Right, right. And how EMS used to fall under the fire department. So now they're their own department, so we had to break them out. So there's going to be a lot of that, training cost recovery with the departments. You know, we had to meet state code on that. So that's all that is. But there's not anything, there's not anything. Okay?
All right, thank you. Wait, 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 before you. But item number seven is to approve the 2025 holiday schedule. And that has your name on it as well. Do you see that bus? You are the person.
Yes, I do. I do have a copy of that.
We just added.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. So I think that we've got a couple of holidays in there, but Juneteenth. We had to make sure that we're aligned on that. Yes, that we got it on there.
So council members, do you have any comments or questions about updating the holiday schedule to reflect the Juneteenth holiday? Thank you. You are.
Thank you so much.
Item number eight is a resolution confirming the cost of weed lean. And those addresses are 207 Fairview Street and 214 Woodland Hills. Is that Brett? Council members, do we have any questions for Brett on either of the policies? So with that, I will go out into the audience. Do we have any department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Do we have anyone in attendance that has any questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Yes, sir? You'd like to come up and state your name for us?
I have a stupid question, but on number eight.
What's your, what's your name, sir?
Bob Glaser, G.L.A.S.E.R. And number eight, cost of weed lean, is that somebody didn't clean up their weeds?
Correct. So this is the.
And then there's a cost to that.
Yes, so we're confirming, since we did get them for it, and Brett confirms that it did get cut, and we actually have to do the declaration and the resolution so that if the person doesn't pay, it gets added to their property taxes. So that can't be. That is not a stupid question. A lot of people don't know how that works, so.
Thank you.
So at this time, do we have any other comments or questions on any subject on the agenda this evening? Okay? Do we have any comments or questions on any subject in particular this evening? Yes, ma'am, you'd like to come up and state.
Comments that's not on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. So if you'd like to state your name.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Davis Jackson. I am here today to address false information said about me, and again, to ask the council to consider revising portions of the abandoned vehicle ordinance. Mayor, councilmen, members, you were just given a copy of a sticker the city placed on vehicles they told. Please, and you were asked to review the ordinance earlier when they're calling you about a month ago. Please raise your hand if you think a revision is not needed.
I know, I know. We, yeah, we addressed it.
That is a sticker that the city places on vehicles that they told. The question and answer is.
Well, so here's the thing. You, one, we, so whenever, whenever everything happened with your vehicle.
No, no, no. Excuse me, I'm sorry to take that back. That's a different chapter. I am no longer on that chapter. We need to close that book. And everyone keep opening, even when I spoke to everyone except for you.
Yeah, I was like, when you started, yeah.
They kept trying to open that old chapter. This is not on that chapter. I didn't even put an article in the paper. The article says the concerns about revising.
I haven't read an article in the paper. I apologize. But, but here's the thing. So, so you just handed a paper and then asked if we wanted to raise our hand about.
That is a part of the ordinance. And my question is, I keep asking for a revision. And it's been six months.
So hold on. So you, you say you keep asking for a revision. You, you came up, the last time you spoke with us, and you addressed everything that happened with your vehicle. But since then, you haven't asked for any specific change. And then at the last meeting, Councilman Jackson just asked for clarification on something on the abandoned, asked about a mailing procedure. So here's, here's what I was saying.
Madam President, may I please correct you? I did bring this up prior, saying I did not speak with you because your number was not on the website. The other council numbers were. I spoke to all of them and stated my concerns. So it was what I, only person that returned my call or responded to my call was the mayor. And he stated he did not see a need for a revision to the abandoned vehicle ordinance. And when I spoke to the people on the phone, everyone except for you and except for the mayor, they went on and on trying to open that old chapter. And I kept telling them, this ain't about the old chapter. The mayor just listened to me and he said, I will read it and I will get back with you. Everybody else tried to open the old book.
Okay, so, so you, so you said to the mayor, he said he would read it and get back with you. So you, you did attempt to go that avenue. Have you gone back to that avenue?
I stated prior just now, the mayor responded back to me. Winston Jackson, well, he has to respond to me in the house. Responded back to me. Les Cora did, and Mayor Hollis did not. Les Cora did not, excuse me, and Mayor Hollis did not respond back.
Excuse me, I spoke to you on the phone. I called you back the same day. I spoke to you that day.
No, no, no. I asked, you fell into trouble. I asked you, like I asked the mayor. He responded correctly. I said, will you please read the abandoned vehicle ordinance? As because I have concerns.
I told you that I would review it, and I did review it.
I said I have concerns about changes from the ordinance.
Okay, so you, so you've given us, you've given us notice that you have some concerns, and you have now given us this, and you are asking us to consider it?
No. Just that one I am writing down. And just do you, I asked you earlier to review the ordinance. That has to be somewhere in the ordinance because it's a part of, because they put it on the card. And I'm just asking you on, do you, that, that needs to be revised?
Whenever you ask something of us as individuals, no one has the ability to come up and say, hello, can you raise your hand? We have different methods of research and, and questions and answers we have to do, but you actually called individuals and they are now on notice. So I would, I would advise you to still use those, those paths. And if the mayor has gotten back to you and people are reviewing it and they don't see a need to change it, then, then that is the answer. That means that this particular council, at least a majority of them, are not finding anything wrong with that particular ordinance. Sure.
I see something wrong. The thing about it is the reason I'm here right here now, standing in front of the council and in front of all these people, is because no one asked me, Barbara or Ms. Jackson, what do you feel needs to be changed? Well, one of them did, you know, one. Councilman Jackson stated one thing he wanted to change, that a certified letter be added to send to the owners.
So then, we're still getting back into, even though you were saying that that chapter is closed, it is not closed because you're asking for a revision. Now, that being said, I would like to put your mind at ease some. The Director Ward has been making sure that abandoned vehicles are still making sure that they are getting their sticker, that we are trying to contact the people so that in other instance, like what happens to you is not happening. Are people perfect? No.
May I finish my presentation, please? And before I do that, I'd like to answer the question you just gave me. Or, and stick to the audience.
No, well, see, that's the thing. When you come up here, you have to address the council. You're not speaking to them.
May I say something about the sheet that you have?
Sure.
And I, I want to tell you, the ordinance has that also. I want to make clear that. On that sheet, the reason I said that you faced that there should not be a revision on it, that sheet they're putting on the card, but it does not have a date. So it needs to be revised with a date added to it.
Well, that is, that is something that you can specifically say. I would like, I would like you to consider that this have a date put to it. And that's all you need to come up and say.
I have asked over and over those things. I mean, nobody, I, let's go back. I've been trying to put my concerns out there. We went in executive session on the old chapter. This is not, and I keep telling you, this is not about the old chapter.
This is where you're trying to protect future people. I understand that. I understand that.
I said that the, the notice and certified letter, it's added to the already written ordinance. It does not require a certified letter.
Then that's all that you have to say to us? And if we vote to change that, then great. And if not, then that is the wishes of the council. That is what the council agrees to do or not do.
Unless the citizens say, do.
And they, and they will. You, you just have requested it, and if the council chooses to bring it up and change it, then the council has that authority. You have brought this specific request to us now. This is the first time I've ever seen you bring up this, saying, can you please add this, but you're asking for a procedure change? And then, but what we can't do is come up and say, can everyone raise their hand and that something should be changed on it?
I said, if you agree with me, that was there.
This is the policy. This is the policy and procedures that we follow every single day.
A month ago, almost a month, I called everyone. We had a long conversation with some of them. And everyone there.
And no one has brought it up. And no one has brought it up.
Thank you. That's why I'm standing here.
Councilman Jackson brought it up last night. But they almost feel that they need to bring it up, even with speaking with you.
And with me standing, Captain, Madam President, I hate to get this way. Please excuse my expression because I did say tonight, please. I'm standing here now. You keep telling me, we don't know. And then you're telling me, you got to just do that sheet anyway. You don't know what all my concerns are. No one has asked me.
Didn't you have a conversation with the mayor? You had a conversation with the councilman, with Barbara? And you have, and you have conversations with Councilwoman Jackson? And you've had a, you said that Councilman Barbara is the one that you haven't had a conversation with? And you haven't had a conversation with me?
I repeat again, the mayor returned my call. He responded to my call. But I've been talking to him. He told me, he reviewed the ordinance that I requested, and he found nothing in need for revision. And that was it, that was said, and I'm proud. But he did respond and he told me.
So this is, this is the, I feel like you keep, what you're, what you're doing is you're reaching out to everyone individually, which we welcome. We welcome that. And you did not get the response that you requested. And now you're coming here and requesting, but then you're dissatisfied with the answer that we're saying, that people have taken into consideration and don't feel that anything needs to be changed.
Okay, please, let me address this to the council, Madam President. Can someone there except for Councilman Jackson, tell me what my concerns are? How can you address something when you don't know what they are? Please tell me, Madam President, tell me, okay? What, what concerns I have?
I could say you had expressed concern to me that the length of time wasn't long enough, that person only had seven days to repair their car. And that wasn't a good length of time for somebody who is in low income to be able to repair their vehicle. We discussed that.
Well, that is part of, this is, this is.
I did call you back, and we did have a lengthy conversation about it. And I did acknowledge that I, you know, about the ordinance and everything, that I don't feel that there's anything I need to change it.
So I, at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to say, let's close this chapter. And I'm going to actually reach out to you and let's have a conversation. Because I feel that you, I feel that you are going to everyone, but then you admit that you didn't contact me. Although, you're right, my name, you're right. You can't call me during the day because I'm teaching. However, however, I will say that I will, if you, in between this meeting, I will get your number and I will reach out to you, and we can have as long a conversation as you like about this. But what I need you to understand is what, what you were requesting may or may not happen. But I do want you to feel that your voice is heard.
Madam President, let your voice be heard, okay? I can't, this is not on the old chapter. This is about the.
I understand, I understand that you have a concern about this.
Forget that. And a date needs to be on that.
But that's, that's the, and that's, that's stuff.
Now we know what my concerns is with that. And I feel that they should, that's a business if you add a date to it. I mean, you're revising something. So, and I mean, I feel, if you give me that, and I'm looking at everyone else, and my, my, my feeling, old chapter, that's behind.
I understand.
But then I'm asking. Excuse me, my, my. With adding a date, that's all I'm asking for, a date to be added.
Okay, you and I can have that conversation.
May I please give, so I would have to talk to everybody about revision. I have my concerns right here. For this, I think I deserve the opportunity to not be such a, I don't have the time to call each one individual again. I don't want.
I don't understand about Kushma. You brought this to the council about the third time.
Well, because I'm, I'm calling each individual. If you allow me to say my concerns.
If you will read that, and then, and then after that, can we close this chapter? If, if, if you were saying, if you were, can you read that and request that of the council, the council will take it under advisement?
For a length of time, I would.
Right, okay.
I said, a length of time, I want to deal about you. Enough time to give you. So the other concerns, explaining now, I'm going to go through them. Most of you know it, and if they read the paper already, they know that. And I must tell you here, this is not about the old chapter. It's about the new chapter. It says, I requested, well, I, I requested be revised. And I would like you to look into, lack of proper notification. That means a certified letter. No, that's the grace period, be added. 10 to 14 days you lived in that. The second thing, lack of due process. Establish clear processes for a vehicle owner to correct the tolls. This could be done by wanting a fine and eventually removing the vehicle. A lack of, a letter, a certified letter be included in the notification that's added, but it's not in there. Stickers placed on owner's vehicle have a date on it. The next thing to look into, excessive fees. The towing and the pounding fees. Charge to vehicle owners are strictly high. These high fees in effect, low income residents who may or may not be afford to immediately retrieve their vehicle. The ordinance should include cap, free cap, and fair fees, fair, fairer fees to prevent predatory practice. And the last statement that I'm giving to the council. Okay, that's something I love you to say. In conclusion, I need to read this first. And this is still on this chapter. I would. I support the ordinance, the ordinance. And I want everyone to know, all council members to know, I support it. The abandoned vehicle ordinance, captured to improve neighborhood appearances, property value, and public safety, it's very important. In conclusion, I again ask the Ozark City Council to review this ordinance and instead revise it to better meet the needs of the citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We will take that under advisement. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any comments or questions about any subject in particular? And now at this time, we do have a presentation. So I would invite our guests, and Ms. Michelle, and the mayor to come up because we have a senior center presentation.
Stand right in the middle. Go stand right in the middle in between.
In the middle path, right there.
Yeah.
Just hold the check up right here, they'll stand on either side. Ms. Pat, tell us what the check's for.
This check is given by Hillcrest Baptist Church, which we sold. And the monies that were left in the church as far as idling and anything else that was left there, we've been looking to do donations. And I don't want to get into my spiel with this, but I might as well go ahead and say it, that I have found out in the last week or so, there are a lot of places in Ozark, Down County, Alabama. there are a lot of places in Ozark, Dale County, Alabama, that give out things to people, and I have found them out. We're, we're noticing this. But this is for the city of Ozark, which is the senior, senior center. You want me to give it them out, or does it matter? Okay, this is fifteen hundred dollars from Hillcrest, which now is Trinity Methodist, if anybody is looking for another church. This is from a table. This lady and I goes back a long time ago. She called my twenty-two-year-old granddaughter. And when I walked in there yesterday, there she was. Thank you. Thank you, too. Don't worry. You're so... We do know how we are. Right, we do know. We do. We do know how we are.
Give it to Chris. Okay, so we will do that. I will go to the mayor for final comments.
All right, I got quite a bit, so you'll have to bear with me. Um, you should have in front of you the alcohol license proposal that the civic center, we need to go a little bit over before we send it out. We did make a couple of changes. We're going to do beer only. The reason for that is there's some health requirements to the kitchen if we do mix drinks. So we're talking a quality of expense. So we will go ahead and do it this way this year. We might decide during the year that we will make those changes to the kitchen, which is new.
You have beer wine licenses, isn't that the same?
So what I need to be added to this?
Chris, you were involved in that conversation.
Wine also?
It's the same license. It's the same license.
The, the wine's the same license, but anything that needs to be poured out of a bottle and to, into a glass requires all the other repairs that I have to do. So beer and wine's fine, but anything else has to be, uh, has to make those improvements.
So, so wine still requires the...
If the, the actual license that they will give and titles them to serve beer, wine, and mixed drinks, but you're choosing for them not to sell mixed drinks. So they're taking their contract with that exclusion.
I got you.
Those requirements are from the health department and not from the administration.
Understood, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
It will.
Wine will. No, well, wine will not be served, because in order to pour wine, they have to fix whatever needs to be fixed. So it would just be beer, so that it can be...
Okay. The next item, the M sixty tank, we did receive a twenty-five-hundred-dollar gateway grant from Alabama Power to help us with this project. We are struggling to find anybody in the Wiregrass that can move that tank. It weighs, it says a hundred thousand pounds. And so I've had M one on Nova Cell and the chief of staff on Nova Cell looking, trying to help. They have nothing that they have control over that's, can carry that kind of weight. So what I did is I reached back out to the A G in Montgomery today, to that office. And I said, you were planning on donating these two tanks to Anniston, which meant you had to transport them. So I'm just going to save you six hours of travel time, just don't worry about it. So that's run up the chain in his office. Maybe they'll figure out, the National Guard has the equipment. It's just not on Nova Cell, and where we have access to it out there. Our one point, uh, four million dollar access road is coming along very well. The civic center stage has been delivered and is being assembled. Uh, the Flower Center demo on the backside, uh, we hope that's the start next week or so. Had a huge grand opening event for Taco Bell yesterday. Uh, it didn't just last during the event, it was all evening and night. It was a madhouse out there, so. Uh, I know you've seen the pads at the Open Everett basketball court. We're waiting to strike those. I did send you something about the vandalism we had on the bathroom, so we can't win, we gotta redo those now. Uh, Claybank Jamboree, of course, is Saturday. If y'all get a chance, try to be at the amphitheater stage at ten. Uh, we're gonna do a little, uh, event where we're trying to promote the pharmacy banquet, or the pharmacy tour and banquet, if y'all are, uh, agree, be there for that. The community-wide church service, uh, is at Civic Center five P M on Sunday. Love to have y'all there for that. The airport, we have been battling a issue now for several months with C A E out of Dofen. That's the company that does the air, uh, air force training for the helicopter before they turn over to continue the training on, on Nova Cell. And they, part of their training is what's called auto-rotation. So when they do that auto-rotation, they're skidding down our runway, which is causing damage to our runway. Uh, Denise had asked them to stop, uh, they come to the board uh, last week, the week before one, and asked, they did a little demonstration of why that was important, why they needed to do it. I'm telling you this to tell you, every airport around here, they shut them down. We also, the same thing, Dofen did. We will wrench you a piece of dirt on the airport. You can pour your pad, you can skid on it all you want to. So we don't know where that's going to end, but I don't, y'all don't think we're anti-military? The military will not let them do it on the military base because they're a private company. But the folks on Dofen Airport, Hudson, Happyville Theater, we all felt like it should have been addressed on the contract between C A E and the government. So it's just something you're not going to see or hear about, and I just wanted to go about it. The ADA playground will be in next week, and hopefully, uh, getting started the next week. You should have received the letter, uh, from Mayor Saliba from the second congressional dinner. I'm going to explain what that's all about. Mayor Saliba and I have been talking about, we've always had that second congressional, uh, dinner in Dofen every year. Now that the district lines have changed, we are now the first congressional district. We go from here all the way down into Mobile. So Mark and I have thought about us, the organization, and getting Mobile and the Wiregrass to recreate their own. But I don't think we're going to want to go to Mobile to a dinner, and they're certainly not going to want to come to Dofen. So it'll be two, uh, different divisions, I guess you would say, of that whole institution. And then we could come together for, you know, voting purposes and that kind of thing. The, uh, you have in front of you a letter from the red department requesting to go after, just played in Dixie, the boys' World Series again in twenty-five. Just look that over, we'll discuss that later date. Also, I think I've mentioned this to you before, and, uh, we do have this in place. Regional planning has a half million dollars in Brownsville assessment grant application money. I have applied for two of those two properties. They're on either the end of our new access road, the Hardy property, which was the old gas station, and what is now the old Hartwood property. I don't remember what that was. Both of them have fuel tanks, or have had fuel tanks underground. What this assessment does, they come in and they, they go through the review process, and they tell us what it's going to take to clean up that property. So when we try to market that, we already have that number and, and a procedure in place as to what we're, what we have to do. But that's a, uh, hopefully save us a lot of money that we don't have to deal with.
And there, where's that property located?
Either the access road we're putting in out there, it's the, the gas station.
The gas station.
The old Hardywood, and the one right there we're returning to go to Ann's Restaurant, that building on the way. The, uh, wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Bridget Gallow. Uh, she was the, uh, one behind this book. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, if you look at it, it's a recipe book. She almost did it single-handedly. And, uh, it's a lot of cute pictures in it, a lot of good recipes. Uh, she will, she put a lot of time and effort into this book. Uh, I think I was the third purchaser of your book, so y'all will all need to buy one under twenty dollars a piece. And I know we have it here, Civic Center, Holden House.
You'll be at the booth at Claybank.
I'll be at the booth at Claybank. And the last thing I want to tell y'all, uh, we are forever seeing and finding, and y'all can call it in, properties that uh, either have grass issues, vehicle issues, demo issues, potholes, whatever. I have sat down with Matt, and we are going to take a map of the city. And we're gonna start at one end, and we're gonna go through the entire city. I've asked him to look at a variety of things and make notes, report those in staff meetings. We'll report them to y'all, and we'll try to address those. When we get through the entire city, we're gonna turn around and start over again. Uh, you know, I'm out about a good bit, but I don't travel the entire city. And it just, that's just to me, a good way for us to make sure we're treating everybody the same and, and addressing issues on every street of the city of Ozark. So I just wanted to let y'all know that. There is a list of events that are happening, different things. Y'all make sure y'all pick one, one of those up, and, uh, make sure you're there.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Councilman Jackson?
Uh, yes, uh, what I'd like to say, first of all, is we've had vandalism at both Steadorf Park as well as Open Everett Park across the years. I think it's time that we install some cameras to try to catch the carports wherever they are. But also, we're making some improvements at both parts. And regarding, uh, Open Everett Park, uh, I know you mentioned, uh, courts, uh, which are almost finished. I had a call concerning, uh, whether or not we were going to strike the courts with the three-point lines, I guess. The athletic folk know all about that. And also, new, uh, new backboards. Maybe the new backboards could be put on the same old posts or whatever. But that would be a step forward. And the other thing I have is regarding Make a Difference Day. And if I make no mistake, I think it's on the twenty-sixth of October, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and the group that I, uh, normed, or the project that I normally try to work towards is the Race Track Cemetery. And I think it's, I mentioned before, uh, and I mentioned them again, we're trying to get some tree companies to come in and cut some of the large oak trees that's hanging above the graves. Some of these graves, this one, the cemetery, some of them date back to pre-Civil War, I guess, kind of right. But the point is, we're hopeful that they will, that the city can draft a letter or something to give them a tax write-off for their services. So what I want to do is that option. I asked my clerk, Matt, if we can, if we can draft some type of letter or something to give them a tax write-off for their services. Because they're willing to do it free, as long, free to us as long as they have a tax write-off.
That would have to be left up to the city council.
Well, and, so...
I guess we could draft some type of letter to that effect.
Yeah, isn't there a church that's in charge of it, or no?
Yeah, there is. There is a church in charge of the cemetery, but now we're off, we have been offering services of other churches as well.
So those churches...
But we're talking about private contractors with the tree cutting business.
Right, but the churches can't do the nonprofit?
Uh, no, no, the census Make a Difference Day for the city, that's where those come. That's the angle I was coming from.
But is it a church's, is it an actual church's cemetery that they go to?
But maybe difference day is a...
The church took over the overseeing of the cemetery.
City sponsor.
Right.
Yeah, is it, yeah, maybe difference day is a secret.
Let me say this. This has been a mystery for some period of time, but the, the records at the courthouse indicate that that property is owned by Bethel Baptist Church. Nobody knows where Bethel Baptist Church is. I've asked several, uh, persons that I thought might know. Nobody remembers Bethel Baptist Church. It may have been one of those prior Civil War, but it has been maintained by current churches, but they won't own it. So we don't know where Bethel Baptist Church is. We know where Bethel Methodist Church is, but we don't know where Bethel Baptist Church is.
And, and the deed still reflects Bethel, you say, in the record?
That's the only deed.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Merrell?
Uh, Wiregrass United Way, I'm the Dale County campaign chairperson this year for Wiregrass United Way. And we're having a fundraiser, dinner downtown fundraiser coming up on Thursday, October seventeenth. And we're, we're have tickets for sale. Heather's got tickets, I got tickets, Ozzy's got some tickets, Holly, Heather has some tickets. Um, and we're also doing a Yeti raffle. It's a big Yeti cooler filled with all kinds of goodies and stuff inside. And we'll be selling tickets at Claybank Jamboree, the Wiregrass United Way booth, uh, on that, and there's stuff up, up front here too, about, uh, information up here about it too as well. I'm going to support because Wiregrass United Way serves a lot of agencies here in our, in our area, especially in the Beatty Adam School, Boys and Girls Club. And, uh, they, they do a lot of good for our local agencies here. And that's why I always, every time Walter Hill, the CEO, asks you to volunteer, always, always tell the guests, because you see what all the good that they do in our communities across the Wiregrass, especially here in downtown Ozark.
Thank you. Councilwoman Merrell?
Well, Claybank's a given, that's already been said, right? And then, um, I'm just one of yours, but, um, Carroll High School's homecoming is rescheduled to October the eleventh. So, um, you know, it was moved because of the storm. So I just encourage all the former alumni from Carroll High School to come out on October the eleventh, participate in the, the parade, the tailgating, the, say for the football game, and all of that, to, to show our students that we still care and that we're proud of where we originated from.
And, uh, the only, well, for that, so, uh, the only thing I have left is, the Dale County bicentennial had to be rescheduled for it, so, um, but there's still the show that is going to go on at Flower Center.
The play.
And it is Thursday, and tickets are available. And you can also buy tickets at the door for it. It is at seven P M at Flowers, starring Winston Jackson.
Madam Chair, uh, anyone here can leave this meeting and go directly to the Flower Center and purchase tickets this evening.
And you also can purchase them online as well.
If y'all will get through in seven minutes, Ozark Baptist has got a, uh, event at the amphitheater downtown.
So with that, I will close this meeting and begin the next meeting in, can we start in two? Two minutes. All of these videos are over. Begin this evening with a prayer. Hello, gentlemen. All right, um, we will begin this evening with a prayer led by Councilwoman Merrell and the pledge allegiance led by Mayor Lightfoot.
Fire your hands, please. Lord, we just thank you for this day that you made for us, Lord. We, we just ask that you also pray for those affected by the hurricane. I mean, it is some really, really bad stuff that they're going through right now. Uh, be with them, uh, help, help them heal and, and build back, Lord. Uh, be with us as we conduct the city's business tonight, Lord. We ask you to bless each and every one of our citizens. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that the minutes be approved as presented.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a... Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving the minutes as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is to set the agenda for this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we set the agenda as presented.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting the agenda as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is a board appointment. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion to the, add Susan Judah to the preservation, store and preservation commission board, new first adoption.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this board appointment? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is to approve the updated policy and procedures handbook. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the updated policy and procedures handbook as presented by Heather Jordan.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving the updated handbook? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is to approve the 2025 holiday schedule. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we approve the 2025 holiday schedule.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving the calendar, or holiday schedule? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is a resolution confirming the cost of a weed lane. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution confirming the cost of a weed lane at 207 Fairview Street in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Oh, there's another one as well.
Madam President, I introduce a resolution confirming the cost of a weed lane at 214 Woodland Hills, also in the amount of four hundred dollars.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any, either, do we have any further discussion on approving this resolution? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So with no further business, mayor, do you have any final comments?
I was, did demand to tell y'all that we did let everybody go at twelve o'clock only.
On the day of the show, on Thursday?
They were only going when the entity's still working.
I think he worked there.
Dofen had us by an hour. They let you go at one o'clock.
Dofen let you go. All right, Councilman Jackson, any final comments?
No.
Councilman Harlow?
None.
Councilwoman Harlow?
Nothing.
None for me, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on adjourned? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, I call a meeting.